Is that the grand?
Yeah, it's my.
Yeah, we had a.
Had his situation today, so kind of.
Thanks for sending.
Well, I guess the presentation. That's part of the agenda.
Yeah. We'll have it up there. Brad, is there, is there a presentation on the tablets? Yeah, they're on tablets. Sort of got to look at him, I'm thinking Greg Brady.
Mr. Joe.
Hello.
Have you got it? Having the curly hair.
Started working out yesterday. That's not mine.
Yeah, my brother makes fun of me.
I gave up.
I brush it around.
Turning gray, turning loose. It was like.
Educate them. I'm gonna hit them. How do you know someone by their.
When's the next solar eclipse?
I need to consult. So I'm trying to find the way. Do it the way that we want, because you got people coming in that want to change it. Do it conventionally, well, that's not. We're not doing that here. The owners, the owners are committed to do it the way it was said.
Okay, called order, Meniala City Council workshop, all raised for a moment of silence.
First, please.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before you get started, I hope you don't mind, this is my granddaughter with me, we had.
There, not me.
Right there. My son, as y'all know, has had, has a very serious genetic disease and he's in Boston for the week doing research, trying to figure out what's going on. With that, we were watching her and my mother-in-law fell today. So she had to get moved to South Lake, we're trying to figure that out. And the other side of grandparents, their mother is in Sumter County because she had a heart issue today. So hopefully we'll make this long, it wasn't a highly contentious disease, highly contentious meeting, hopefully it's all good information, what I've seen so far. So thank you for working with us.
Kyle has four children, I have four children and they're good, so you got a young kid.
Yeah, my daughter was, when she was that age, went to college and sat underneath my desk at that age because we could, we weren't allowed to go, you know, didn't have online learning, you had to take your student and things happen. So thanks y'all for understanding and I appreciate it, so we'll try to keep the noise down. If not, I have duct tape, I'm just kidding.
For the door to you or for us?
With that, yeah, thanks for clarifying that. And for my daughter who's watching online, I was just kidding. So if we can take a moment, the agenda view looks pretty simple, if we can just introduce ourselves, if you don't mind.
Sure, also, my name is Brett Jones, I'm the line use lawyer.
My name's Madeline Damon and I work with Brett.
Okay.
Major Stacy, sibling chair.
Okay.
Kyle Caulfield, I'm with the applicant.
Thomas Corrins, planning department, city of Meniala.
Eric Raj, contract planner to the city.
PM Service Vice Mayor.
Eddie Plank, council.
Pat Kelly, mayor.
Eric Hernandez, council member.
Joseph Saunders, council member.
And representing Senator Gertkin would be.
I can do it, Major.
Jennifer Koch.
Okay.
Assistant City Attorney.
Okay, so how do y'all want to, this is kind of your workshop you've requested, you just kind of want to walk through the project or how do you want to do this? This is pretty non-casual, this is very casual, so what do you think?
We prepared like a five to 10 minute presentation, try and give them all like five minutes.
No, it's all good, it's all good.
I think, you know, and then maybe, you know, 20 minutes of questions.
That's fine, sounds good.
That's the goal.
That'll.
We have obviously circulated the deck, so however you guys want to walk through that. I do have some printed copies, that's useful.
You're gonna, Brad's gonna put it on the screen behind us and then we'll have it on our, we'll have it here, so we should be able to see.
Do hickeys?
That's it. So I'll just give you a thumbs up. There you go.
Oh, the clicker, yeah.
You have the clicker.
Oh, you have the clicker. Thank you.
She is the clicker caddy.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, could you pass the microphone around when people are speaking, just because we're having a hard time picking it up on the stream?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you. Do you know which one I click? The arrows? I'll do it, ready? There we go, got it, okay, thank you very much, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Fantastic. So firstly, thank you everyone for taking the time to meet with us today, we really do appreciate it, especially under the circumstances, it's hugely appreciated. We were trying to keep the presentation to five, 10 minutes and then open to questions. So firstly, this is the, the presentation for our proposed project, which is the Meniala Commerce Center. So we dive into a little bit about who we are, why we think this project is great for Meniala, why we think it works for us, and what we think we can bring to the community as a, as a result of it. So first of all, who we are, why does it matter? So that's me in the bottom left, Kyle Caulfield, obviously the most important one on the, on the slide. But we, we are actually part of a 50-year-old company, which is called Greenberg Gibbons Commercial. And we are a special kind of arm of that company called Greenberg Gibbons Properties, and we specialize in shallow bay development specifically. That's our lead, leadership team, which consists of David Williams, Brian Gibbons, who's the namesake of the 50-year-old Brian Gibbons, the Greenberg Gibbons Commercial. Our two founding members, which is Alex Laparus and Drew Thigpen, and the gentleman sitting at my left right here is actually in that photo in the center with me on that wonderful day, and that is Tillman Herring, head of acquisitions. So why did I put those photos of our family and friends up? We do this across the country with extremely high quality product, we have a lot of pride in what we do, we are a family-run business, we maintain assets that we construct, and to us, it's really important that they look good, are built well, and that we continue to maintain them over the course of the lifetime of the asset. We do not come in, build projects and flip them, that is not who we are. So we genuinely are a family-oriented company, that is my family on the right-hand side there, most of the people who work at our company have multiple children, I completely understand the situation, I have a five-month-old at home, and you can see her right there in my, my wife's arms, so totally get it. So that's who we are. What do we do? So we deliver a shallow bay, class A commercial space, class A means it's concrete, not metal prefab, it's high-quality, it's retail-focused, and it's small building sizes. And we focus on providing a space for what I consider to be the backbone of American business, which is the 99% of small business that kind of stands up the American economy. We support local home service-based businesses mostly, and we maintain a retail storefront experience throughout that, and we think this is, this specific product is currently undersupplied in Meniala and the Lake County area. So a little bit more about the product, we do have some localized design choices. So we customize within the specific geographies, counties, townships in which we work, with the local, local community on their, their design preferences, and also the needs of the tenants in the market specifically. So that's some examples of different designs that we have across the country. And yeah, kind of, that's our product. So why Meniala specifically? So over the last year, roughly 1,400 homes have been built, sorry, my eyesight is terrible, so it's, it's really small to me. So 1,400 homes in Lake County have been built in Lake County in 2025. And like we said, the small business is really the, the thriving backbone of a great economy and a great local economy as well. And the average owner of a small business, drive time is roughly 20 minutes or so, you know, people like to live and work, they like to live in the same place they work, especially owners. So our typical tenant is really like that home service business, so we have a picture of, that's Del Air, one of our core tenants. And the map that you can see there is the layout of the density of these types of tenants across the region. And as you can see, we plotted by density, the Meniala region has a minimal amount of class A commercial space that can, that can supply these types of tenants. So we see it as two things, one, the local community requires it, it's, it's needed for great local business, for support of the local residential community, which we have lots of being constructed. And we have surveyed our tenant base to try and understand whereabouts the hotspots are, and this keeps coming up over and over again as a particular location that is favorable to them. So it both meets the, the demand of the tenant and the local residential community. So where specifically are we talking about? We're talking about up on Highway 27 at Citrus Grove, and this is the existing condition on the site. The reason that I showed this is that I think what we've accomplished here, or what we are going to accomplish here drastically improves the existing condition. So there's currently a fairly large billboard on site, it's opposite the John Deere factory and the electrical substation, and the road front edge is mostly about one-third of the site or so is maintained by a 1.2 acre parcel that's owned by FDOT that fronts most of Highway 27. It only has one access to the north of the site, and our proposed solution addresses all of these issues. And then the actual site is internally fairly topographically challenged and drops off very steeply to the eastern side. So to accommodate these, this is our proposed plan. So two, 100 to 130 feet deep buildings on the total 13 acres, which includes the FDOT parcel, have a total of 120, 120,000 square feet. Our average tenant size generally actually tends to be more like 8,000 square feet to 12,000 square feet, we have a lot more 8,000 square feet tenants than we do, but the larger tenants do bring up our average to 11, 11,000 square feet, which averages 20%, of which is office. So the key benefits on our proposed plan is one, it removes the existing billboard on site, incorporates the 1.2 acre pond that's at the road front edge, and we've worked with FDOT on surplus in that pond already. And we have, which will improve access and the road front edge along Highway 27. It solves some of the topographic challenges that the actual site has by bringing the development alongside the highway, and it significantly improves both the aesthetic, safety, and viability of the whole project. As you can see, we are installed on D cell lanes on both entrances. So project highlights, one, we're committed to invest in $25 million into Meniala through this project. We are estimating generating at the low end 180 new jobs, at the high end 240 or so, and estimate $300,000 in annual real estate taxes. We are adding 1.2 acres to the township by annexing the FDOT pond into the town, so increasing the tax base as well as bringing the critical highway front edge that will make this project both viable and also more aesthetic pleasing. From a safety standpoint, we're committed to improving the access to the site, as well as improving the existing site condition, and we have worked with FDOT from a partnership standpoint to meet their design criteria and create an economically viable project for Meniala. This is, as you can see on the billboards over there, the view coming south down Highway 47, and then this is, oh, the view going north. This is actually onsite, I'm kind of flicking through this because everyone's had the chance to look at the boards over there, this is onsite driving through Meniala Commerce Center. And we think it has a great feel and really raises the, the level and the standard of that site. So in summary, Meniala Commerce Center, we're asking you for support for 25 million, $25 million investment, addressing the community's commercial space shortage. As we said, there's only over 1,400 new homes that all require a service from HVAC suppliers, professional services, and there's very limited space for those, those companies to currently maintain. It has a strong economic impact with the job creation and taxes, we are a proven developer of this product type specifically, and we're working in partnership with the community, FDOT and the local stakeholders here getting feedback to make this a great project for Meniala. So we'd really appreciate your support and we welcome any questions, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of decisions to make, there's issues, your property too.
Yes, sir.
Did we not discuss this, I don't have the project script, let's just clarify that, I just need the back, the understanding of it. One is, you still, you still own the backside of this too, because remember the first time we had. Accessibility to the back, the back parcel, that's, here's my question, just the accessibility to the back, because there are all sorts of houses back there.
Yeah, absolutely, so.
Tried to look on the map, I didn't see.
Do you want to go back to the site plan in a second?
If you can go back to understand.
It's tiny, but. So originally, we were going to do restaurants, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the same con, same concept, you're putting some type of commercial on the front.
Correct, correct.
Market chains, got that whole story.
Right.
Question is, how are you accessing, if you decide to build the back out, how are you going to access the back piece?
So this, this illustration is, is more of an illustration than an actual site plan, so there is an easement that wraps around the north and the east of the property, and it stops.
That's fine, so there is an access.
Yes, sir.
To the east of the property and the north of the property, so those are already taken care of, so they're easier to go there, so those people.
Yes, sir.
Don't have to drive through your place or if you decide to, I'm just thinking in the future.
They're both stepped out, right?
Yeah.
All the houses there, and this is the church.
Okay, the, the step out of the easement on the north end, that's a pretty dramatic, I think that's what you had to deal with, with your, the topography of that. It's pretty much a drop-off, it's more of a diving board than it is a drop-off, so who, so how, what do those people have to do and how does that impact them to get to the, to use that easement or that, that step out?
The residential property owners to the east?
Yes.
There's an existing road, correct?
Yes.
We're talking about the existing road.
Well, both of them, actually, I'm all over the board, I'm about both of them.
You know the one on Citrus Grove? Oh, okay, so.
The parcel to the north, Major.
Gotcha, so the connection to the parcel to the north, the parcel to the north has a cars feature on it, and I'm not quite sure where they're going to end up doing, developing that. We have been in communication with the Dalies who own the property to the east, and they have direct connect to Citrus Grove, so that's the most important thing, is maintaining our connection with the Dalies.
There's an existing PUD on that piece of property.
Yes, sir, there is.
And so that was the one that they were going to come down, the PUD was going to be in there, and then eventually it was going to connect to yours with the thought process.
Correct, and we've, we've maintained that connection.
Say, your project is, is parcel.
Yes, sir.
It's not shown very well on there, on the northern, sorry, it's not shown very well, but the north parcel does have a road that connects out to the east there.
Those are my, my two pieces, you got the billboard gone, so that's kind of. We don't own that building, so that we have standards, it looks like you're building standards needs, so it's, looking at your coffee cup, when you look at this, I'm, I'm seeing the vision of two ways it could go, to go, I kind of like the idea of the, you know, right now I need to get a pressure washer fixed, there would be a place that I would take a pressure washer to get it fixed or stuff like that. But you have Kelly's, which looks at the same place, are you looking your, the light industrial place uses, light uses, are you looking for more of the sandwich shop or something like that, end up in this, or anybody that will rent it from you, do you have a target market?
I mean, I can talk to our existing tenants, which is highly home service-related businesses.
That's just what I'm, I'm, we, we need that.
That's who rents from us.
Okay, now I just wanted to know who your target market was, and that is who is. I'm gonna, just for her, I think Eric or Joe.
Yeah.
Any ladies, if you want to jump in.
Just a few questions, clarification, within the PUD, are there any variances going to be needed, following Mark's question?
That's a break question.
These are all things that kind of, based on the conversation tonight, we're going to work together and put them in the PUD agreement, and that'll come force forward to unit amendment, and then after that, there won't be any variances.
But as far as for square footage, as you know, we have an 18,000 square foot variance, but obviously with the PUD.
That'll be in the PUD, so you won't need a variance.
And signage as well, though.
As far as I know, we're going to comply with the standards, I mean, you allow signs and you got to fit it in the box, and that is what it is, there's no magic to it.
I would, I would ask to just, I would approve over the signing order, it's a pretty certain one, I don't think it's anything that you can't adapt to, but just make sure that you.
I mean, there's, there's no interesting sign requirements that you guys like that are extreme, you're pretty, it's pretty.
No, I think in one of these renderings, it just shows they're all uniform, so when you look at a retail strip center, you'll see the customized ones, I mean, ours have spit, I mean, in our leases, we say it has to conform to this, this simple design. And, and color scheme, so.
I think it's more of the square footage, if you, if you, if you had one that took up half a building, they're going to have one sign, but if you have a smaller one, then they're going to have more signs, and those square footage just add up, so those are just what I'm asking for. I think he's trying to allude to is, please put your PUD, that if this comes through and if it gets approved, we don't want to see it again, basically, just make sure, we just get back like, oh yeah, I forgot about this piece.
No, that was it.
And just to piggyback off of what Eric had mentioned, because I had signs as well on there, are you looking to do a monument sign outside of the area to list all the stores that are there?
Yes, I mean, we would like to have a monument sign, our tenants generally like to have that.
Absolutely, and I think that was our concern, well, a concern in general is that signage, because, you know, you can do a, you know, what, there are certain sizes that you have to.
Comply with.
Comply with, so, you know, instead of coming in, what is it, I think there was somebody that asked for 15 feet and.
I think it's getting to the point of if you have a monument sign, not every business in your strip mall gets a monument sign, you get a monument sign that lists multiple tenants, but then they can actually.
Have their own signage on the store front.
On the top, but that's kind of just the part of.
Yeah, and I don't know what the typical size of ours is, but I'm not tall and they're, they're nowhere near as tall as I am, so we, we can show examples of, of all of our projects and what we've put up there.
Show shop routes, just making sure.
It's going to be consistent.
I think, Tom, what we'll do is we'll just look at the code, verify what the numbers are there, and if yours fits in there, we don't need to bring it up, and if you need an extra foot, we say, can we get an extra foot?
Mainly a lot of it's height.
Yeah, it's just a height, it's, it's, then come back and then you want a variance or, you know, 30 foot.
It's mainly to show a sign for the property itself and not less.
Perfect. A good example is the building across the street where they have, everybody has their signs above it, but then they have a monument sign, so that's a good, that was one that was kind of, we had some struggles with that monument sign, but I think it's finally made it into, it finally made it into.
And it looks presentable as well, I mean, you can read it off of 27 even further away, but on the same token, you're, you're able to read it from a distance, and it's not something that's, you know, just an overkill.
A billboard.
Yeah, you're getting rid of a billboard, we don't want you to add.
Put another one up, we're not erecting a billboard.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any problems you foresee with the residents in the back? Lighting, noise, big trucks delivering at 3:00 AM, anything like that?
No, our, so to talk to kind of standard retail, like full retail, like a Target, they're doing kind of two trucks a day, we do less than one. And our truck, the kind of parking front edge is generally very light for the type of user that we have, so.
I was just thinking maybe how the residents would think of it, kind of those questions, but I think it looks great.
Generally speaking, this type of a building has overhead doors in the, in the rear. Going to look like a long row of overhead doors. There's going to have to be a buffer between there and any residential area, we don't want that residence looking at.
Yeah, I think that's one of the key things.
The way the site plan actually lays out because of the pond requirements and the orientation of the building, do you know the depth of that pond, if you have your head?
I don't off the top of my head, but it, it's, it's very large, so you have to think, we're relocating an existing DOT pond and combining that with the stormwater onsite, and this is a closed basin, and so you're dealing with the 2596 storm, so it's, it's quite a, quite a large amount of area that that pond takes up.
This one's asking, do we have a landscaping buffer or anything back there, something that can be done, even if it's.
That's something that I brought up, and to Major's point, like the, the northern boundary, the northern east-west boundary, which is a longer one than the southerly one, that's over 500 feet, so. that's over five hundred feet, so if you look just for scale, that area's gonna be about two hundred feet, I would say. So, you're gonna have that two hundred feet buffer of the, it'll be a, it's not a wet pond, it's gonna be a dry pond, so you're gonna have that two hundred feet anyways.
I'm gonna ask questions mainly to your attorney, not that, y'all just don't understand, but I, so in relation to what this would look like, to what politics looks like at Citrus Tower, where you have it backing up to a neighborhood, there's a huge gap between there. Is this kind of, is, is, this is giving that same flavor of.
It's, the lay of the land is different, but yes, the, the size of the gap.
The depth, I'm just talking.
Yeah, it's significant, yeah. Like if it was dry, you can, you could have a little league baseball game in there, like that's how big it is.
Okay, that's fine, but it seems, it seems to take that, that flavor.
And there's, there's gonna be water in that pond all the time, or?
No, it's a dry pond.
Dry pond.
My number's a weird question, because things that I don't wanna see, and again, you're not from around here. We have Mark DeCarr's property at Center Street, what is that called? Is that Maniola Muse?
Center Street Muse.
Center Street Muse. Um, he built that out, uh, but he didn't get COs on all the bays. How does that work? Because now, some of, they didn't get COs, they're like falling apart. So, is this all, yeah, there's like one piece that's got a big gap in between. It's a different construction, y'alls. I just wanna make sure that this, that, that the structure of the building will be out. I know that you're not gonna get a CO on the inside, because I'm sure you'll use the dirt flooring to come back in and lay later, but basically of the out, I'm assuming that's how, what the concept is, is you will.
No, we will, we will pad, we will pad for the.
You'll pad everything.
It will be a finished shell with a full CO, and then we will apply for an individual business license here for each.
I'm just more concerned with the structure of the building.
I'd say they don't build a right, right tag.
No, it will be fully.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't, never got a CO.
Right, but, yeah, well.
Wow.
Never had that, but interesting. It's gotta be a remedy for that.
If you get bored, you can look at it.
It sounds like Jennifer's problem, but.
We're trying to avoid that problem.
The other concern is, if you get some of the, um, and, and I'm, I'm looking more of the, now we're shifting gears more to the hunt industrial. Just gives the flavor, a feel of the hunt industrial, but at a whole nother, easier level, so I'm not comparing you, your appearance to it, but the same structure. Is making sure, how do we make sure that if somebody doesn't have a trailer pair, that they've got trailers sitting out there, or they've got cars sitting out there?
This is the question that I asked, 'cause I, not that I anticipated, I didn't anticipate, but I was, I didn't anticipate, like, bleh, I did not anticipate that you would ask, but I was interested for the exact same reason. Uh, and so, the answer was really good. It's like, we need to justify getting high enough rents. So, they're gonna have their own association docs that, that prevent that.
Okay. So, on the back piece of the property, you're gonna have parking, and then a parallel parking, that, that's my concern is, you know, if you get a, if you get a, the Dell, whatever, the, the air conditioning people, I think most of those are taking trucks, so you don't have a fleet of trucks parked there. Or a Massey or something like that, but it's, how do you, how do you prevent, and at night it's fine, but how do you prevent just leftovers and the broken down trucks sitting out there in front and stuff like that? So, there's gotta be some controls about that. Some of it is code enforced, but just.
Yeah, I think there's a way to, and you're right, I mean, would you wanna put that in the DA?
Yeah, we could definitely put it in there.
Yeah, I just, I think, you know, what I'm, what I'm asking is something that you're like not opposed to, because I think if you keep, the nicer you get, the higher rent you get, it's, it's a, it's a good business.
The pre-bond is gonna take care of most of it, and they're gonna force it.
We have a full service property management side of our organization too, that visit, site visits, like, week, like, weekly, constantly. So, that's not something that we would prohibit anyway, but I'd say from a reg, from a contractual standpoint.
Yeah, but we just have the part of, knowing historically, we have a couple of things that went here, that happened a long time ago.
It's the type of stuff that, I think what I'll, practically what I'll do is I'll get a copy of the generic lease of use from Kyle, and then I'll look at, you know, the leases prohibit tenants from doing certain things, I'll share them with Jennifer, and say like, hey, you like this, you wanna incorporate it?
And you know, yeah, and you know we're not allowed, so you can't have smoke shops, attitude, or any of those weird things, which, at that, you're kinda telling a little bit of that.
I'm sorry, hey.
It's, that's not.
What?
No, I don't think there's smoke shops.
No, we're, we're, no.
It's very, I get it.
Yeah.
It's, it's all good, I, I get it.
Well, there's also, sometimes they put growhouses in these things, you don't know, it's just.
Well, yeah, it's wild.
Yeah, I'm supposed to go tour a growhouse in the next half a month, it'll be interesting. So, um, yeah, I, I think it's a great project. I think for what Maniola's bases, where you have old Maniola, and then you have the, that called us the commercial corridor of twenty seven, I think it's a fit, it cleans it up. Your property, and I'm, I'm looking at this, I was trying to figure out, it goes, it doesn't, it goes from the church all the way to Citrus Grove Road?
It does not.
No, it goes church all the way to the road, the access road into it. Okay, so the cut through that we were looking at, Eric, is not, uh.
Oh, it's not, okay.
No, that, 'cause that property is owned by the gentleman who owns the seven acres, the seven houses off of Truckee Farms. He owns a, he owns that one, I think. So, yeah, 'cause I was like, 'cause that's what we're looking at, we're looking at, so, yeah, my question of the road is that.
Oh, so it says, okay.
So, you'll have one curb cut in and out of twenty seven, but you will not be affecting the person's driveway, that road, are you wanting that? An entrance, or you have to, or you have to, or are you gonna have to road improvements on your property, which is fine?
We're, we're doing road improvements on the property. We're gonna have a diesel lane kind of on the south, just, just when you get past the, uh, church. And then the existing, uh, access that's going to the houses, that curb cut's gonna be maintained.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it's, I think this is kind of what, have a, what, what, I think this is what I envision, I think there's not the business that you're looking for, the things that I look for, and I have to charge to Orlando, that, like I said, you know, pressure washer, repair shop, like, somebody, that's what I would see here, is like some, a small shop that guy does pressure washers, you go in there, um, some of those things that we have. And it looks like a pretty nice looking project, if it looks good there.
Are there gonna be any air conditioning units on the roof, or are they all in the rear?
Uh, the, no, no, they will not, as it's built. No, not the roof.
Your other tenants.
He actually, sorry, the office space is conditioned. The office space will be conditioned.
But some of those, many splits, they're small.
Yeah, small mini splits, yeah, it's not.
Just air conditioning, the, the office portion.
I just didn't wanna state a definitive and not be accurate.
Right. Um, no bay doors on the front, all bay doors are on the back?
Correct.
And once you build this out, depending on your tenant, you would choose what their, what their, if they want one bay, two bay, three bays. Do you have like certain, certain bays, like, this is the normal bay size, and then they get to say, I want one, two, or three?
Yeah. And the, the depth of the building is the reason that the tenants are smaller, so you can't.
I think, Eric, you had a good point of the eighteen thousand square foot, but I think when you get down to the bay pieces, it's like, I don't think there's some of the eighteen thousand square.
No, no, no.
So, I think that kind of, that helps on that piece of.
And that's the thing we'll, we'll put in the, yeah, as well.
Do you envision anybody, do you have any tenants that have over eighteen thousand square feet in your business?
We have maybe three, three or four.
Do you have any that are even over eleven thousand?
We have one tenant in Charlotte, right by the airport, called, uh, Sky Chefs.
Yep, it's my airport.
If you're familiar. And they're in, I wanna say it's thirty thousand feet. This was a very unique case for us, um, it, they needed to be by the airport.
Yeah, and I, I get that, but I think, I think for me, just think, think outside the box on how you, how that gets ordered.
Tell them they put way too much slot in there.
I'll note that.
I think he's probably there more than at home, it's just, so, yeah.
Does he, sure, the design of the buildings with the, the, the shorter width between the columns and the shorter depth really eliminates your tenants that are distribution oriented, these bigger tenants. And, and we frankly don't, it's hard to justify, for us to justify the, the economics for tenants that are larger, 'cause they typically pay lower rents.
Hence the shallow bag. You can't, you can't do it in.
Yeah, you've got a business model, you're shifting in here.
We're, we're adhering to a business model.
I'm assuming that you already have these buildings designed, you're just gonna kind of pace buildings down.
Pretty much.
Yeah, I mean, that would be brilliant, I would, I would say this works here, this works here.
This is what we, this is what we build, is what we build everywhere.
If, if a tenant wants to, let's say a Skyzone, for example, and they want air conditioning the whole thing, is that an option they can do, or no?
They're tall enough for that. They're tall enough.
But not, not the sky, okay.
A pickleball court.
Technically, yes, they could do.
They could do that.
In theory, yes. If we, you know, we're then, regulate, we're then.
What is the height of these buildings? Now, Eric wants to know the height of the building, is that it?
What is, what is the interior height of the building?
The, uh, the interior clear height to the, from the slab to the joist is twenty four feet.
Meet the pickleball regulations?
Yeah. Hey, you wanna pickleball? You're looking very well.
It was a personal question, but I think I would ask it on behalf.
The reality is, most of our, ten, the vast majority of our tenants don't need that height. They rarely use even eighteen feet. But we're designing these, um, you know, because we think it gives us optionality for some tenants that might need it, but most do not.
Do you have, you have any more questions, Eric, or you major?
Yeah, what, what are you doing with the city water? You're gonna have, uh, each unit has its own water meter? Or do you put in one central water meter and that takes care of the landscape?
It depends, project by project. I don't think we've got that far yet. I don't think we've got that far yet.
We, we have not got it that far yet, whether we're gonna do a fire line master meter with a, you know, a bypass detector, like a two inch meter, and have a property owners association that everything's, uh, metered, uh, but we are, um, dragging the utilities. So, the water line stops at the south of the property, we are dragging it all the way to work, that's something Fred wanted.
Typically, we don't separately meter the water. And Sky Chefs is a different example, 'cause they actually use water, a lot of water, but our, our tenants are, I mean, flushing toilets and washing their hands. So, it's, it's really a low cost for us from an operations perspective, that just gets pushed onto the tenants, but.
I think that, that thing that you.
Separately meter for electric.
Well, I was thinking from the standpoint of the city's gotta put in, what, fifteen, twenty, I don't, maybe more water meters? If they're all individual, if not, then we bring in one water meter and, and, you know, two water meters, one for irrigation and one for, for potable water. And that saves us a lot of reading and a lot of effort.
We try to limit it too, is because it's not really a tenant need, I mean, other than just basic.
How much water can you use in a.
It's, it's less than you do in your house, at the end of the day, so.
Bless you, bless you.
Um, what underlying zoning, are you kind of PC?
They're lending the PUD.
It's a PUD.
It's a PUD, yeah.
Right now, what we're gonna do on it.
Automotive repair?
It will.
Okay.
Now, was that an active or online?
No, automotive repair.
Oh, what, I'm sorry, online?
Automotive repair.
Oh, they said online repair.
Yeah, 'cause I'm thinking of the, well, I'm just thinking of the, again, I think back of other things that we have and what they look like. But that kind of limits the trash pieces, what I'm thinking of, how do you handle multiple trash cans, and if you have somebody that uses a lot of cardboard or something like that, how does that? And that, that's a site plan question, but just follow the ordinance, it says they, they have to be proximate and stuff like that.
Would auto restoration follow in their auto repair?
We have a separate definition for auto painting and auto repair, so.
Well, they're like, if you wanna get a classic car restored, with that, that's not really mechanical, it's restoration.
I guess that's something else.
If there's mechanics involved, so I don't, I don't, that's a, you probably would be better off saying we want both of them, or just narrowly tailored. No automotive, except for.
Classic.
Restoration.
Yeah, classic restoration.
That was a, I don't think it's a narrative, parquet, parquet.
She's done so well.
I can tell you right now, my baby would not be sitting there like that.
She's doing amazing.
She would be asking for attention right now.
She's a little bit of a grandpa.
I really, I really appreciate the, the time.
No, and I, I appreciate, I was kind of excited to see what you, what you have here.
So, one last question, lighting, lighted signs, is that gonna be a part of the PUD?
Yeah, I'll, we'll take a look.
Lighted signs.
Neon signs.
Just exterior lights.
Neon, yeah.
Yeah, exterior, yeah, just exterior, like, uh.
Not for broad, but good question. So, like, is Maniola vary from a international building code or floor building code, with respect to flat rates?
Yes, they, they have specifics on the architectural standards for, um, industrial and commercial buildings, as well as, um, what is, sorry, Eric, can you help me out? There's a particular flat roof material that's.
Wanna fly with the parapet, or you, you wanna certain type of material you use, like a board?
It can't, it can't, it can't be the, uh, TV membrane.
Coating membrane, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's supposed to be metal or, or tile, and that's something, just need to look at and code, but, um, any relief from, anything like that just needs to be incorporated to the PUD.
It's usually something that's not thought of until you're willing to site plan, so that's why.
Oh, by the way.
We'll see you on a FNC next week. Yeah, just one point on that. It, it doesn't prohibit you from having a flat roof, it just says you need to screen it with the parapet all the way around. And we don't wanna see rooftop mechanical. And then.
And these designs have parapet, they're all parapet design, right, Tom?
Would there be any restriction on, um, people playing drones on the property?
I don't think that is within the jurisdiction of this body. I think that's reserved for the Federal Aviation Administration. So, it's a move.
You guys don't have like a drone's block, oh, we don't know.
I don't necessarily know if you can restrict it, what do you think?
I think the airspace is in the, is reserved to the protocol.
Yeah, it usually is.
FAA, so we're preempted from making any local laws.
I think it's a great project for this. Do you, we saw it years ago, one of your projects, you can see this from through?
I'm not, I'm not going anywhere.
Well, the record, the record is, we've, we've, we've talked about the, the same Popeyes for three times, and they've never come through, so.
The Popeyes, I love that chick of a Popeyes.
Yeah, we had a Popeyes come through, and then, we've, we've had these, we had the meetings, and then they didn't produce, and then they came back after everything expired, and then they came, yeah, so. It's still, it's still not vertical.
No, no, they, uh, they've actually spent money with us, and, uh, so.
And this one, you actually came with, you came with customers instead of doing, so thank you.
That's true.
Yes, I appreciate it. Uh, no, um, if there's any other questions, um, we usually don't, we're trying to control, but is there any, the audience had any questions, or, that they have, they wanna ask? Go ahead, so, if you, if you can come up, we're gonna have to ask you to speak into the mic, please.
Grab my chair?
Oh, sure. Sure, name and address, please.
Um, William Daley, uh, my address is thirty nine Laurelhurst, I, I live in Spring, Texas. My sister and I own the, one of the adjacent properties, uh, I think there's five or six.
Your sister lives in California?
Yeah.
So, yeah, you're the ones, this is, this is the property behind you, this is the one they were talking about?
Yes, sir, the, the, the Dailies, and so they've got the, uh.
Not turn in with the face, we dealt with LPMG, or.
Yeah.
With Great Global, that was a pro, for that project.
Yes, yes.
So, go ahead.
So, um, uh, so my concerns, uh, I'm not really familiar with this shallow bay concept. And so, one concern is when I quickly Google that, I get, uh, uh, multi-tenant industrial properties, industrial, so that's scary to me. Uh, I have to say that, you know, the, the concept diagrams look, you know, good, although it's all showing from the street side. And, you know, they kind of have a commercial look on the street side, we're on the other side, and, and I think it's more of an industrial look on that side.
And that's why we discussed some type of blockage or something like that.
Yeah, and so, you know, uh, for, you know, our hope is that at some point in the future, there'll be houses on our property. And thinking about those people living in those houses, I don't think they wanna look at it as an industrial site, so, um, uh, yeah, so that, that's a concern. The other concern, which you've talked about, is the access. Uh, and so on the concept drawing, it doesn't really show it very well.
It doesn't show it very well. Um, you talking about the site plan, the, the?
Yeah.
Yeah. This one?
Yes.
Yeah, so that road entrance, want improved, are you talking about the northernmost?
Well, so, you know, people now. Well, so, you know, people now are 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 moving along the northern.
Yeah.
And then, uh, for property owners, uh, to the east, they're also moving along the, uh, eastern path.
Yeah, there's an existing easement over all of that to maintain that access.
Right, 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 okay.
And then the actual.
It kinda looks like there's trees or.
It's just a bad graphic, but yes, there is, there's an easement and a road that goes up there, and the entrance will be better than it currently is, and the road access.
And you already have an access off the city's government road.
Yes, uh, but, you know, it was apparent that the city would want us to have an alternate access.
He had already had an agreement, so there was an emergency case, something had remained in transit to that property, so.
And we've been aware that the eastern northern portion is, like, northeast of this is an existing residential P D, and we've been designing around that concept and already.
Okay, well, I was gonna start off my talk by just saying what great neighbors Jason and Major had been. Um, they really have communicated, you know, this process to us. It's not a big surprise for us. Okay, so, uh, uh, so I I addressed how would it look, you know, we're concerned about that. Um, the other concern I have, I I just wrote down my note, was late night commotion. Uh, and so, you know, I've got this fear that the the Mythbusters are gonna move in, and who knows what's gonna happen.
They'll take care of something like that in the P U D, we're very self-aware. I mean, they'll, they'll be a good neighbor clause, I'm not sure, but that we've limited even on other things, that there will be something that that's, it won't, I, it won't be an on-high rate, they can't turn it into a concert venue.
And so, you know, the other part of this is, uh, you know, it's gonna have an industrial look just with the bay, so some kind of buffer. The other concern, though, is are they gonna be tidy, you know, is there gonna be storage outside of their bay, you know?
See, that's what we were discussing earlier, where they will put that in the, in the developers' agree, in the agreement there, that they have to maintain some type of, but again.
Well, the good, the good thing is, they're gonna retain the ownership of the property, so they have say over how that works.
And that helps, then it helps control their tenants, so if somebody's messy, they always limit it to a messy tenant, and, you know, that piece too.
Do you guys have CrossFit jumps, with some of your tenants?
No. Yeah, one thing our plan does that's unique to our plan to how it's currently set up too, is that because we've taken the F D O T pond, we've moved the whole project back away, right, so we've increased that buffer significantly by incorporating the F D O T pond, and then bringing the water all the way around, so we're actually drastically increasing the buffer than what's existing.
Right, so so my last concern, and and actually, I think I liked the pond moving, you know, because of this buffer issue. Uh, I'm just wondering, is there a downside to having this, because we're downstream, right? So is there a downside to having this pond sort of looming above us in the downstream?
That was my question to Major, is, is there opportunities for future pond sharing opportunities, the elevation?
Um, any, uh, any future pond sharing would end up on, uh, Mr. Daley's property, because it would kick it.
That was my question earlier, is like, when you look at this, are you gonna have, are you gonna have, and I guess it's the same topography that we have at Quail Valley, where they're gonna have to look up to see this, so anybody looking down on an industrial for tidiness, they're having to look up to even see any of that piece.
Yeah, you won't even see it over the.
Yeah, so you're, you're up, you're up higher anyway, so.
They're up higher, sir, with the line of sight.
There's a line of sight for his, is up the hill compared to down the hill.
Right. But I think you're concerned more if there's, that gets flooded, will it stream down to your property?
Right, I, I'm just ignorant about how these things work, but, yeah.
Major, you have this design for a twenty-five year storm, right?
Uh, we we have a design for the twenty-five ninety-six, so we're taking, I wanna say, out here shy of fourteen inches, thirteen and change, and, um, we've gotta recover the entire twenty-five ninety-six within fourteen days, and we have to recover the treatment volume within seventy-two hours, so it won't turn into a mosquito pit. We also performed, um, extensive, uh, geotech at a preliminary point that we're at. They they, they really have done a lot more work than most developers do. I I've been impressed. Um, we did a clay mapping contour, and so we can make sure that we're daylighting, so one of the things that Mr. Daley would be concerned about is if you were to get, uh, multiple storms and start getting poundment, and you lose the bank, you know, you lose the bank, and that that blows out. Um, in this situation, uh, that road on the east that runs north-south, i- it is relatively flat, so even though the to- the topography falls to the east pretty hard, north-south, it it levels out decently, and so you're gonna end up, one of the reasons the pond is so large is, um, the sandwich that you have to recover is only, you know, four or five feet. You you can't make it thirty feet deep, because you're getting into clay and everything else. So it's, um, you're not dealing with a twenty-foot wall of water slamming against it. For example, at Ardmore, on the north, the northeast pond, uh, at Ardmore adjacent to Quail Valley, we had to put a three, uh, millimeter, uh, liner in to make sure that no water would ever make it into those residents, and so we don't have a situation like that.
And you didn't do it for Quail Valley, so.
I did not, I did not.
Hey, Major, you gonna be able to tie the property elevations together, get to have a ten mile in the back?
That was my next question, is what?
So the access, the cross-access was i- important in discussions with staff. So we grew, the entire site is, uh, graded out, and so the connection to the church on the south, we have it on the southeast, because that's where everything, uh, levels out topographically, and that lines up to, uh, their kinda driveway in the back. So we're gonna take that easement and run that easement through the, uh, parking area, and then stub it out to the north, so we're keeping people off F D O T, and so we'll have that cross-access, and then the cross-access to the Daley property, we're making sure we maintain that.
So when you build the road out, like, for post-plan, are you going all the way to the couple, you go the road out, the whole length of your property?
Uh, the north.
The north?
Yes, so the, so you'll build it all the way out, and then it makes it back, go to the.
Good, cor- correct, yes, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I have another question. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Jennifer Morrison, sixty-four, Golden Don Loop, this is a nice microphone. Um, I appreciate the the buffer that you guys put between twenty-seven and the buildings and the brick facade elevation, that's great. I was gonna ask about the height, um, Mark probably knows why about that. Um, my question for you about considering like the height, if someone were to give a concept of, say, like a sky zone or indoor playground or even a pickleball, where would your parking ratio, um, allow for that type of activity with people in and out?
Yeah, I mean, g- generally, um, no, answer that. Our, our, we're part of the two spaces per one thousand square feet.
Oh, okay.
Which accounts for, um, at most across the project, about twenty percent of it is finished space, office space, commission space, and the balance size, storage, or, um, you know, the like. So, um, now typically for a big rush, I've been a lot of, it's with my children and things, and they can be very problematic.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and now we're trying to stick with a very defined set of of tenants, and it ends up being problematic for the other tenants, generally speaking, and we don't wanna have that issue.
Okay.
I think you mentioned a good one up, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because we had that problem with Clermont, at the place where the veterans center is, where everybody was building and getting their parking lots, and when they had the last lot left, there was no more parking spaces in the pool. Right, so how was that managed, or Brad, or you gotta see to figure that out, how was, how was space allocation? Because if you get a business and it requires so many spaces, if somebody came in and said, I want business A, and it had.
But it's more forward-facing for customers and stuff.
More, it needs four spaces per thousand compared to one, just how do you go?
Yeah, I mean, the 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 best way to manage it, in thinking about that, at length, from a fiscal, um, responsibility perspective and what works, is just let the market dictate that, so you're not gonna sink your entire complex to have one gymnastics, like kids gymnastics, or one sky zone, and then, you know, make good money in that one unit, and then blow all your other units, because they don't have parking.
Cause Randy Johnson was at, Mr. Zidnabi's.
Think about, think about the, uh, see, I think, I don't know if you lived here back when there was an I G eight by Nicole Street in fifty, you remember that, I G eight?
And Spiros and all the other.
Spiros and all that stuff, right, so now there's a gymnastics, and they they chopped the I G in half, there's a save lot and a gymnastics, and that gymnastics, when they're having classes, packs out that, so I think that's the surge, uh, parking concept, and I just don't think from a free rent perspective, because of the operators, they would have a tenant like that, even though I understand the desire for it, I would.
Yeah, I mean, that's not the issue.
It's just not, from from like, there's two reasons, like, the physical limitations of the shallow bay mean that you can only get a certain depth, so the eight thousand square foot tenant is what fits for us. And if you, if I was to show you right now, which I wish I could do, but I can't, like, at our I T P project on the cameras that we have, you'd see three, maybe four or five cars outside, because most of the professional home-based service businesses, they're out doing their jobs, right? So just purely from what we do, that is really negated, but I'm sure there's a contractual.
Well, that's unfortunate for for us, but.
You got ideas too, but she does bring a good point, because we have, we do see a need, we don't see it more now than we did ten years ago, where small churches wants to come in here, and so that's a part of, so just how do you work that? And those are kind of a workaround where they need a space, and then they came to Cactus Lot, and they're like, oh, well, you can only have service at night, but then everybody else is filled in, so those are the things that we just need to make sure that. I have to speak here about saying no to churches, just in case I got the wrong God or something like that. I don't work at anybody's religion, but, you know, I I think everybody should have that chance to to worship they want to, so just how does that handle? But it's still, again, it seems like your your market's not gonna be that.
Yeah, I I mean, that's, I think, the the best actually regulating thing, or something like that, is the free market. They're not gonna spend twenty-five, thirty-five million dollars and then shoot themselves in the foot from an operational perspective.
Yeah, the car, the car repair thing is, one that brings, that that you brought up, it's like, just how does that work? Because I know Griffin's book over it. Has a really nice, he's got a, when I, when I was there, he had a nice building, it fit to this, but how do you not have that with fifteen cars broken down in the backyard?
I mean, do you, do you even care about that, Kyle?
Oh, you put pistol car repair, can we take that out of there?
We've turned down, say, we've turned down.
Problem solved.
Perfect.
So, um, and I would ask Council if there's anything after this meeting that you can have, you're like, oh, I wish I would have not liked this, or something, if.
Just call me.
Yeah, balloons, I don't wanna, uh, birthday balloon place there or something.
Oh, well, that's too much.
I'm just saying, anything bizarre that you think of, please reach out, so.
This truly is a cl- like a class A product, like quality, we maintain it, like it really is.
You say that, and then somebody comes in and.
Yeah.
Typically, what we do.
And we're gonna miss something, so tell us.
Typically, what we do in the P U Ds is allow most of the added commercial and light industrial uses, and then start taking out certain things that you all don't like, so we would have the automotive repair be prohibited, and so if there's anything on the list.
Now, I'm gonna ask a weird question, and it's not that it would be for retail, but like gun restoration, stuff like that, does that fit into this piece? We'll sidebar.
I don't think that we've ever had.
Ever, that would be, that would be an enormous, uh, gun restoration operation.
Yeah, I don't know, how to, how to.
Like a shoe trade or something?
I'm gonna ask Eric, can you help me articulate how to use somebody?
It's a gun manufacturer.
Gun manufacturer.
But this isn't, there's no manufacturing here?
There's no manufacturer else to taste, so.
Okay, well, that solves that problem. See, you're just checking the box too long.
It makes it easy. Bring your grandchild, make it immoral.
So it's more of an F F A, so class two F F A, they don't want somebody in there manufacturing their own bowers and hoppers.
Okay, so we're good.
I have a couple more questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Wait, Jennifer's not done, no?
Yeah, just a couple more, it's okay, um, sorry, Cheryl, a couple more questions. Um, at one point, um, I had a little bit of knowledge on this, would you allow onsite dry cleaning businesses? With like, straight up, like, with their chemicals and stuff like that, no? Okay, cause we kinda need a dry cleaner.
Sorry.
What?
Ambassadors.
Where's that at? Yeah.
Close to the line, though.
Oh, it's X X O.
That little one, yeah, that, they're so expensive.
Ambassadors is good, and he's a mini old resident.
Oh, well, there, okay. Um, and you do mention, which I love, this, the small businesses, so how, what percentage of small businesses do you allow of actual just startups that don't have multiple locations or are franchisee?
Um, I don't know the answer to percentage, uh, but there, there's a good percentage of our tenants that do have more than one location. It may be two, three, four locations, and they're looking to open up a third or fourth. Uh, they may have something in Sanford, and they may have something, you know, a little further south in Phil Orlando, but there's nothing up here. Um, generally not startups.
You're like, it's kinda like next.
Yeah, it tends to be a business that's been in business for handful of years, they have, uh, financial, um.
Seems like you've got, you've got, you've got a certain level of effect.
Well, it's class A, so I like, I like the question, like, is there a place for someone to put a startup shop?
Right, right.
Being a business lawyer, which is my real job, not my new slayer, uh, those people usually don't start in classy space, they usually start in C or B.
Yeah.
Or they're.
I mean, come to my office, it's not classy office.
Well, I mean, like, somewhere, I, just more of, um.
Classic.
Just like, kind of, quick sidebar, opening an indoor playground, they're not usually franchise, you know, places, but they are highly profitable, multi-billion dollar businesses, and Sky Zone is the only indoor play place, so looking fine.
But the question is.
Oh, no, no.
Green roofed buildings?
No, like.
Is that class A, is that considered class A, or is that considered?
That's barely class B.
What, which one are you talking about?
There is one, um, there's one on five fifteen.
Oh, the, the, yeah, for, for little kids, yeah.
Green building.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is more of like on scale with Sky Zone or like a launch or something like that.
The reason I was asking is, I was just trying to figure out, this is a step above what that is.
Yeah.
And and you have a great point, they might be so profitable that they would pay very high rent rates.
To get into the market here, yeah.
Right, so I don't know, but again, it's not designed for that, so it's not to say that it could.
Yeah. And then my last question, I think, or I have two more, I think, I wasn't, you guys may have, um, brought this up, but can you only go north out of there, or you, are we able to go back that way?
It's right in, right in, right out, so.
Okay.
Circulation wise, you come in the south entrance, go up, and circulate out.
Okay, perfect, and then once you guys get all your permitting, permitting and everything, how long will it take you guys to go vertical?
Uh, for once we have all approvals, we would hope to be between ten and eleven minutes.
Cool, all right, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'm gonna say no. Pre- pre-curse.
Are you sure?
I've only changed three documents in my life.
Shower somewhere in this building, just.
There's a picture of me with my daughter upside down in the shower, it's been done before.
So you do.
Yeah.
Do I lift her, and I'll tell you the shroud spot?
Yes, I don't wanna lift, I don't, leave it alone, I did, they did send me with diapers, though.
Cheryl Pavlak at eighteen oh eight Carey Street, thanks for the humor, Mayor, she's adorable. Um, and looking at the concept designs, I've seen buildings like this where I've gotten stuck, and and I've seen them in, um, typically they're, we, like CNN has their s- local studio in Orlando, where you go there and you, that's where they interview you. I've been interviewed before, and you're, you're on there, or a small printing company, a dance stu- studio, or a blood draw, a location, you said medical, a specialty veterinary on Goldenrod for the eye for the dog. I got in, I couldn't get out, you can't find a parking spot, you only have four spots in front of, like, each bay of door, and I think you're talking about ten tenants, if they're, if I did my math right. So do the employees park in the back, is there enough room for small businesses? We have the dance company right here on twenty-seven, I think that's the name of it, and next to the ponies, uh, whatever it is for the acting, and they park all over the place, you can't get in or out of that, I see the same problem existing over here. Um, I think if you attract like a small business, retail, that would be nice, but there's challenges with that. Maybe an insurance company, like, uh, the Heather Thies offices in Clermont, maybe that would be good, or a high-tech repair, uh, computer studio. Or a high-tech repair, uh, computer studio. I do see, uh, a need for a audiovisual type company that could do videos for different businesses in the area. And that's the type of thing I see maybe going in here, but that would fill up one bay, so I'm not sure this is a, a good investment and, um, if, be based on what Jennifer brought up about the parking. I see that the limiting factor, um, and then the access, I see one access and then one at the north end. So it's very tight to get through there, so, just some of my thoughts and I don't know how big of a truck some, I'm thinking a panel van would fit in the back, but that's about it, so, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Jaeger, twenty-seven fifty Purple Mill Court, uh, Mineola, um, we service shallow bay every day, um, infrastructure companies and they would love to be here in a minute. Um, but parking is probably the issue, is the, the biggest thing, uh, we do shallow bays at McCoy by the airport, um, they have tents in there that they bring in, uh, full, new cars and they cover them with clear. Um, but there's definitely a parking issue and then we do the ones off of Valentine behind the Toyota dealer, so that, they're all your shallow bay concept. We do sum it up here, um, shallow bay, Fire Signature Company, and they have multiple units, but, but again, um, they all have dumpsters usually, cause we service them daily. So I think the parking is the only issue, the concept's beautiful, but parking is.
What lineup work do you run, I'm sorry?
Oh, I, I have environmental company and I do dumpsters, but we, we pick up dumpsters in shallow bays all, all the time.
Are those buildings, uh, and they're older buildings?
Um, yeah, so you have the ones down there on, on the north end side, right by the industrial park.
Sure.
There's buildings there, um, the ones, um, on McCoy by the airport on five twenty-eight are brand-new buildings and they're all shallow bays. And they have a, a small, then you have by the Orange County landfill, all shallow bays there and then you have some gigantic industrial, but they have some shallow bays as you go into the landfill. So parking seems to be an issue and, and some of the, not manufacturing, but assembling maybe, um, so there are some parking.
Yeah, one.
Again, you know your product, I'm just, I'm just telling you what I see daily.
Yeah.
And, uh, that seems to be the deal and, and you want everybody to be successful. Uh, we used to have a company called Four-Each Plumbing on Distant Avenue and as they grew, they took this property and that property and then people complained that couldn't get down the street. Um, that's not this issue obviously, but we want them to be successful, but I can tell you the infrastructure companies would go there in a minute and a lot of the infrastructure companies we go to, they'll have dumpsters outside for what they pick up debris from the roads and they put all their trucks inside. But then they still have employee cars and so the employee cars would be like fifteen or twenty cars down the side of the thing, so I think that's the only thing I see, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe you should, uh, consider a grassy area or overflow parking, uh.
I was looking at on the site plan.
So the two, the two per thousand is above, way, way above the, what is typically used or required in, in every market that we go into. But we see that as an added feature to avoid the issues that he's talking about.
So two per thousand, what is gonna be, if I bought a bay, if I was just a business team and I bought, I did a bay, how many square feet is gonna be a bay?
One, ten thousand would be twenty parking spaces.
So each bay would be twenty parking spaces?
Um, well, no, each bay is gonna be around forty-three hundred square feet from column to column.
So I would buy parking spaces.
So, no, that would be two times, so you'd get nine. You'd nine, but our typical tenant at eight thousand is sixteen and we don't have a project that it were, it's, it's anywhere close to maximize.
And I think it goes back to the free market, if somebody's there and you feel that you're, if Scooter here is taking up all my parking spaces and it affects my business, then I'm gonna go somewhere else.
That's right, you're not gonna renew Scooter's lease. And you as a landlord, you're not gonna renew Scooter's lease, messing up all of your other units.
I don't have Brett's. Brett's gonna let me.
So again, it goes to, to the free market, but I mean, that would be twenty spaces.
Yeah, I'm just. Yeah, just for like a qualitative statement, we have zero parking issues at any of our projects. And if you were to take, drive around, take a picture of any of them right now, you would see lots of nice free empty spots.
Anything else, anything else, Tilman?
No.
Anything else from the audience? Thank you for your comments. Can I get a motion for Tilman?
Motion to the judge.
All in favor of the I?
Alright.
Judging that, but.
You gotta change that baby before you take us home. Yeah, you don't, you don't wanna do that.
Service.
Yeah, no, you're just gonna get a laugh, change her.